...committee commissioners meeting to order. Let's record show today and February 20th, 9:01 a.m. Ms. Root, would you lead us into the pledge of allegiance, please? She's on the range.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation of the God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Secretary.
Your call, ma'am.
Commissioner Flowers.
President.
Commissioner Candace.
Here.
Commissioner Prince.
Yeah.
Attorney Clint Smith.
Present.
And Clerk to the Board, Telecamper present.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate that. Gentlemen, any amendments to the agenda?
No.
More do I need.
Need it.
Okay. Audience introductions.
Dennis Brecker, Recycling County.
There's Nichols, Assistant County Commissioner. Free proper Wetmore fires.
Holling, very welcome.
Stand by in the chair.
Welcome. Good morning, everyone. Is this your first meeting, sir, or?
(laughing).
It's Saturday, Monday.
Yeah, first meeting today, maybe, huh? Yeah. Well, nice to have you guys here. Thank you. Okay, approval of minutes. I don't believe we have any. Commissioner Items? Commissioner Prince or Candace, would you like to begin, sir?
Sure.
Actually, we did have minutes.
Well, you know, I thought we had three, but when I looked at my agenda, we didn't.
Yeah, I sent them...
Let's just search.
Send them...
Did it come from you, Kelly?
February 5, 6, and January 31st. So we got them in the board packet. We just didn't end up getting them on the agenda. So let's back up then, gentlemen. So I would move we add the approval of the minutes to the agenda.
I'll second it.
Then move to second it to add approval of the minutes to the agenda. All of you ever say aye?
Aye.
Aye. So we will add approval of the minutes for January 31st, February 5th, and February 6th. Did you gentlemen get those?
I don't know if I did or not, to be honest with you. I don't like when I do not review them.
Okay. We can postpone if you'd like, or?
That's what I was gonna ask you. We just post till next night. I apologize if I didn't receive. What date did you send it?
Uh, let me look here. Hold on just a second. Usually I...
Probably would've been right after. What was it, the 4th and 5th?
Uh, 31st, 5th, and 6th.
6th, so I probably sent it, yeah.
Around the 7th?
Yeah.
I think it was later.
What day did you start?
4th.
So it was...
Let me look here. Technology, gotta love it. Gotta love it. And you probably sent it to...
I'm searching right now.
Yeah. Probably sent it to Meredith, right? And then it probably came to us.
Sent it to all of you.
Oh, you did?
Yeah, she did. I've never seen them.
Minutes. So it's February 7th, 11:12 a.m.
I'm... I'm... I'm faulted. I do not.
Did you get them?
I haven't.
But you hadn't had a chance to look at them.
I'm sorry.
Uh, yeah, Kelly sent them to all three of us. And Attorney Smith.
I don't have them.
I'll send them to you right now.
Yeah, but I got two to save. Well, it's now still a little long.
Would you, uh, Chair, would you entertain the motion to postpone?
Aye, but we postpone approving these, Kelly. Till the next meeting.
Okay. Awesome. Then move to second to postpone the approval of the minutes from January 31st, February 5th, and February 6th until the next meeting. All of you ever say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah. I never got them once you reached in.
Well, I just ordered them.
Did you get them? At least I didn't get it on that day, anyway.
It's Meredith's, but you put them back into the February 28th. Otherwise, I'll do it again. Yeah. Thank you. And we'll add that to the agenda. Approval of minutes. Okay, Commissioner Items, we ready? Commissioner Candace?
Yeah, a couple of things. We've been busy since we last met. A lot of things are going on. Action 22 had a action going on to work what they're gonna support. And one of the things that's coming up is the state is mulling over where they wanna get out of the Electoral College, the state. And so Action 22 counties all who almost unanimously said that would be a bad... So no lobby, do not let that happen. Be a killer. Then CenturyLink made a pretty good meeting the other day with the status of the phone system down here. Looks like everybody's got the phones they need. You got yours, Root?
I never lost it.
I know. And CenturyLink's doing a good job of looking at the big picture. They've got their grant, as we discussed. Waiting to see what they're gonna do with the new grant to get coverage from what I call Lewis Corner. I don't know what else we call it. It's mile marker six is where they're gonna end up with the paper. They're gonna take it down to McKenzie somehow. We gotta see how the plan rolls out. And we'll have a couple more meetings. Did we set a meeting date to get together? I can't remember. Doesn't seem like we did.
No, I don't think so.
But CenturyLink has signed up for two years of supplying people that are out of phones with an optional money to go get voiceover IP.
29th.
29th of March, that's right. 29th of March, we'll meet again to see where they stand. And the strat plan moving on, we did have a meeting after the meeting up there. We had both a vision meeting with Cheryl Trent. And then we had a... We moved the strategic force, uh, task force into that morning where they began taking a vision and adding actions to it. We're gonna meet again tomorrow night, 5 to 8:00. And then Friday morning, um, 8:00 to 11:00 or so is the task force is gonna be meeting. That's open to everybody. It's at Ranchers Roost. 8:00 to 11:00. At Ranchers Roost. Uh-oh. And then the airport, we did receive the money and paid Cifert for the burn removal. Only thing outstanding right now is the Armstrong Engineering bill for 3,600 bucks. And we'll get that paid as soon as we get in. Also working with the Board on their future plans. We're gonna meet tomorrow morning. You can be able to come, Tom, while bring donuts.
Uh, tell me again, sir, sorry?
Tomorrow morning.
For the strategic plan?
No, that's Friday, but Airport Board.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, we'll be looking at improvements out there and what their plan is. They'll be presenting to us later. And then we had the Water Board meeting, so with the Upper Ark Conservancy Board. And we're gonna talk about that later. I've got some things that we'll discuss on that. Looks like the next meeting, I think they're trying to schedule, just to let you know, from what I heard, they get together with the Upper Ark as soon as we did. We had a little discussion today. All right, that's all I got for now.
Okay. Morning, Jackie.
Uh-oh, Her Highness is here.
Let's see, since our last Commissioner meeting, February 5th, all three of us did attend a meeting with Steve Kastner, a water consultant. We met with him at the Commissioner's Room. And then, of course, the next day, we had a VOCC meeting. And then, as Bill mentioned, February 6th, we had a meeting with Upper Arkansas Water Conservancy District at Ranchers Roost.
Up that Kastner meeting, was it?
Yeah, yeah.
Learned a lot.
And then February 7th, the next day, we had another water meeting at Ranchers Roost, put on by the Colorado Cattlemen's Association in conjunction with...
San Isabel.
San Isabel Land Protection Trust. Thought that was a good meeting. And then we also had on February 8th, an executive roundtable discussion, the mayors of both towns. Mr. Bogal was there from Economic Development. And so we have a monthly meeting with that group, trying to keep everybody informed and pushing the same direction, so. Then we had, uh, as Bill mentioned, on February 11th, I also attended that workshop on the water augmentation plan. We invited the community to that to get some community feedback about what they felt on the plan. February 12th, I attended a Tourism Board meeting, up until the point that Mr. Bogal and Mr. Mullin and I traveled to Lahana and met with the leadership group from CCOM and had a three or four hour meeting with those guys.
Was that good?
Yeah, yeah, it was good. John Saunders is their CEO. We met with the guy on the wireless side and the guy on the fixed water side and had a good meeting.
And talking about their...
Uh, just talked about kind of what their goals and plans are for 2019 and what their grow... They have 7,000 customers in their whole region that they serve. And we are certainly the valley is the westernmost part of their service territory.
They got like 40 towns or something?
Yeah, I don't remember. They didn't say...
Quite a few.
Speak to that exactly, but... And then that SEDOC, CenturyLink broadband meeting on the 13th. Yesterday, I attended a Custer County Weed Board meeting with his honor, Clint Smith, and attended, which was amazing.
Clint was there?
Of course he was there.
I'm on the board.
He's on the board. He's the board.
My qualifications, I had 40 acres.
He barks out orders, man.
Did he?
Yeah, so that's what I've been up to.
Yeah, a very busy period of time for all of us. I did all the things you did. But I have to make a quick announcement, if I may, please.
From now on, we need to call Attorney Smith, President Smith.
He's now the president of the Dog Sky Organization.
I wanna hit my gavel, I'm so...
Get twitchy and...
Enthrall.
I just wanted you all to know we're in the presence of royalty.
We're gearing up for another takeover of the county.
I wonder that.
You got conflict of interest, buddy.
Now we have Attorney in a power, a position of power, and who knows what he'll have. So that explains the tie, instead of the moto tie, because you've upped your game again, I see.
Yeah, pretty soon I'll start wearing a suit.
Yeah. And your predecessor was?
Jim Bradbury.
Oh, that's right, yeah.
Jim was president 10 years. He figured he'd done it long enough. I don't think I'm gonna make it 10 years for anything.
To keep cattle herding, you won't?
Well, I would expect then a special invite as commissioners to go down and look through the big spotting scope and look at some stars some evening.
Tomorrow morning, go do it.
We're closed for the winter, which is was smart, because I was down there during the winter, the last couple of winters, and this year we decided not to freeze.
It's harsh.
Yeah, I'll bet. We would be happy to entertain you.
Well, congratulations, sir.
Thank you. I'll go ahead and give a report. Obviously, I did almost everything that you guys did, except slightly different. And that was Steve Kastner on the 5th, Upper Arkansas meeting on the 6th. We had the Upper Arkansas Water meeting again on the 7th. Have the trustees of the town determine whether they were going to oppose the...
What day was that, sir? I forgot to write that down, and I need...
That was February 12th.
Okay.
You were there too.
Yeah.
And I appreciate your input into that, obviously. Very beneficial in that.
Who was that?
To oppose the Upper... Not, they want to oppose the water augmentation plan. That letter will probably... Not letter, that form with all the trustees will go out. They did vote to go ahead and send in a formal opposition. I went, met with SEDOC, of course, and then on the 14th, very lengthy meeting with their early childhood development. So we've all been very busy.
Now, my early childhood development, are you talking about Kids Council?
The Custer County Kids Council.
Yeah.
It was originally named Early Child Development, and I still call it that, but it is the Custer County Kids Council. They're doing some really wonderful things. I mean, these guys really got their act together. I don't get them all, guys.
I forgot to mention one thing.
Go ahead.
I was the voice of the Custer County Bobcats on Saturday. They actually, the girls team is going to regionals.
How cool is that?
Basketball, and the boys didn't. And then we have two wrestlers going to state.
Okay, excellent. If I may, sir, Commissioner Prince mentioned a West Cliff Town Hall, or the West Cliff Town meeting at their new town hall, which is in the old Colorado Mountain Bank building, so...
How was it? Pretty good, dig?
Nice, yeah. It's very nice.
Did they take the vault? Did they take the vault out of there?
No, no, both vaults are still in there. And now, I would like to formally announce, we have another elevator in the county. Because West Cliff Town Hall installed an elevator. So I think we're up to five, is my count, which to me should be the benchmark of all measurement of a community.
Depends on how many floors it goes. If it goes three, that's a benchmark.
Well, yeah, three, I...
Five.
I... We may have one elevator that goes three floors.
Friend, I'd like to find out.
Which building would that be?
Three floors, yeah. Any ideas which one that would be?
If it was my guess, I'd say Valley.
Uh, Valley's two.
Two.
Same with Crystal Arts.
Yeah, I would call it the lettuce shed. It has three, my guess.
Oh, yeah, it sure does.
Do I have a house that has three?
Yeah, I just want to say there is a house in town.
And I have one out in the valley that has three floors and it has an elevator.
Elevator. Oh, it might be seven, because I haven't counted any houses. The old mortuary had one in the back.
There's one up by me that has three, in Norditeville.
Yeah, that's three.
That's three.
Copper, what do you think about that?
That's three floors.
With my fifth to seven. Anyway, very nice, uh, did a nice remodel on that building.
Amazing how we can waste time at these meetings, so.
We drove all this way in a hurry. I'm gonna take the time. All right, anything else, sir?
No, that's great.
Thank you. Attorney Item?
Well, I took a couple of days off, paid vacation, and then back again. I... Shannon wanted me to look at a medical dispatch quality assurance agreement, which I did. Made a few suggestions. Is that okay, Shannon? Shannon? Okay, so I got that taken care of. The rest of what I've been doing since the last couple of weeks, I'm gonna report in our executive session, so.
All right, sir. Thank you. Admin assistant?
Yep.
Any public comments or statements you'd like to make formally? Well, then we'll take public comments, see if we have any luck with that. Anything for the good of the order?
You do know that the EMR class graduated?
Yes.
And there are nine of us on search and rescue.
Nice, very good. Yeah, somebody said that the other day. I don't remember who it was, but...
And she's our newest member for search and rescue.
Oh, she is?
We snagged her.
Wow. Well, don't try to pay her more than we're paying her, or she'll leave us high and dry.
Oh, yeah, right. If you do that... We're still waiting for our pageant mail, trust me.
Exactly right. Staff report. Planning and zoning. Quick, to the point.
Can I... Do you want me up there? Well, maybe I have...
Just do whatever you'd like. Whatever you'd like. And while you're doing that, I make it...
Do you remember the last time Jackie met with us in Wetmore?
I know. It's really a good thing I have to leave it to them, because she went on and on and on.
Yeah, we'll wait.
Bad stuff.
And that's why my wife remembers this, because she was here, she said Shannon had very soft hands.
Yeah.
Yes.
That's right. That's right, I forgot about that.
Boy, you can pick up on those things.
Let's see if he still does. Happy birthday to Mrs. Candace. Is that yesterday?
Yeah, yesterday, yeah, thanks.
I'm glad you approved.
She had a good birthday.
Uh, you... Whatever you'd like to do. If you wanna sit right there, that's fine.
Um, every year, we have to go through the fee schedule. So I sent you the fee schedule. Now, last year, I asked for some raises in the fee schedule.
Then you decided not to.
And two of you said no, one said yes. I remember that.
Correct.
Okay, so now I'm back at it again.
Okay, can we take just a quick timeout here? Gentlemen, do you have set fee schedule?
Yes.
It should be in the whole big packet. Big packet, that was rude. I mean, I'm not lying.
I do not have any.
She's in Wetmore, so she can have a big packet. Twelve pages.
I don't have my board packet at all, so...
Maybe I can go just a second.
Looks like.
Nope.
Did you email it, Miss Jackie?
I...
Is there any word for it?
Yeah.
Do you have a date?
It was, it should be...
It's a minute today that she sent.
Wow, I did not get it. Boy, we are...
Really? Are you looking at her email instead of the 060?
I'm looking for any...
It's in mine.
No date on it?
You should be in...
It should be in the board packet.
I think you sent that yesterday. Was it yesterday? Or they did come?
So I choose this day, Friday?
Oh, yeah, it was gone Friday, so it seemed like, yeah.
How'd you get it in there?
Couldn't you spell your name wrong, Kelly?
EY.
Never dawned. No wonder.
Well, I did, I transferred stuff in.
Be careful.
She had a date on the email, but it came to you, uh, to Jackie.
It was Friday.
All right. I don't know why I didn't get it, but I didn't get your packet off. Really weird. That hiccup evidently on my server.
My computer does that sometimes, though. So it might've been on my end.
Go ahead.
It's okay, we'll listen. I hate to say that. Don't say it when you're gonna say it.
I've not seen this document at all.
Same one as last year. Residential is still at 35, and my suggestion is raise it to 45.
For what? Say it again, start over.
Residential permits of 35 cents a square foot.
Oh, I see. There it is. You want it to be what?
45, what it used to be. We're still the cheapest county in Colorado for permit wise.
What are you doing with the profits?
They all go to the general fund. Sort of helps the airport.
I vote for it. You are shocked, young lady.
Some political statement, wasn't it?
Not biased.
Any other changes you're recommending beside that?
Well, I believe that most of the changes are good. I am amazed that the special use permits are $500. I've had a lot of people say, "That is so cheap." But that is debatable. I had one guy say that he's paid $5,000 before to accounting to do a special use permit. And really, actually, we are very cheap on all our permitting wise. But I don't know if you... We don't get that many special use permits in because they had approved water.
Question for you. So you're... Sorry. SUP's $300 for the presentation and then 200 for the hearing. Is that the same meeting or are those two different meetings?
Two different meetings. The reason why we split it was a lot of people weren't making it past the presentation.
Right. So an SUP is 300 bucks, and then if you get through the presentation, it's another 200.
Correct.
And they... Do they pay that 500 upfront or no?
Yes. They pay the 300.
Oh, yeah, 300, okay.
Then if they decide, if they make it past that first initial meeting, then they can pay the other money.
So a permitted SUP application is 500, but just to apply for an SUP is 300.
Correct.
Okay.
But is it good for a year, Jackie?
No, it's impertuity unless there's a violation, right?
No, you gotta start it within two years.
Yeah.
Or it goes away.
Oh, you mean the process? Oh, I thought you meant how long's the SUP good for?
No, I know, once it's approved, it's approved, but they don't build on it.
Then you're gone.
Do they have to reapply for another permit, just like you would a building permit?
Okay. May I may. And maybe you've done this. You're bringing up some really interesting things here, but what I would really like to see, if maybe we could ask, I know you're very busy, but maybe Miss Elizabeth or you or somebody could, survey counties approximately our size and make a little spreadsheet to tell us how our fees are in line with other counties. And you may have already done this.
Yes, last year, I gave it to you, and we called the counties, and they said they had no change. So in last year's packet in January or February, you probably still have it, because I know that you don't throw anything of mine away.
I actually wouldn't have it, but I'm having to hand the... Because what I'd like to say is, rather than just talk about one, are you just requesting going from 35 to 45?
At this time, I am. But it looks like Sheriff Carr lumbered.
Because my question would be, are there others that need to come in alignment also compared with the going rate at other similar counties? Maybe we should look at...
Well, I agree, I hear you. One thing to think about, though, Jay, is the reason, for example, I looked into it because a friend of mine was building in Fremont, and he was paying 3,000 bucks for building permit, and they wouldn't give it an extension. And they had to pay another three, unless you have something that's a code. The reason for some of that cost is the enforcement on it, and there's a bigger population of people in order to make that, so there's a higher overhead. So it's hard to get an apple to apples, just because they're charging.
And I favor you.
That is a fair to say.
Well...
That's not, that's a very.
But my comment was similar sized counties because I agree with you that there's a discrepancy.
Uh-huh, and it's hard, you can't compare them because they have a building code and they do, they do it by thing. And also, uh, the enforcement, yeah, they're sitting with five people in their office.
They got people they gotta pay to enforce it.
Uh-huh, so.
That's why I'm saying similar.
Uh-huh, so I got, if you open up your, uh, if you had last year's because you didn't throw it away.
Tell me where, tell me what meeting it was.
It went Custer.
February twenty-third. I'm looking at it right now.
Custer, well, Chafee, Alamosa, Fremont, Yuma.
What page do you want there, sir?
Oh, no, this is from last year.
I'm looking at last year's.
The first page.
Oh, the first one.
February twenty-eighth.
Twenty-third.
But it's, if you, it's extremely interesting because we lowered this to thirty-five cents when the economy was biffing. The contractor said it did not matter to them, the people that wanted to build were still going to build and they were paying the price anyway, the forty-five cents. And so thirty-five did not help them, uh, get any more jobs because the people that were going to build were going to build anyway. So the thirty-five cents, uh, actually was lowered from forty-five cents in two thousand and eight. I don't think it's that big a jump in thinking outside the box because if you're going to build, you're going to build. And it's still the cheapest place in Colorado to build. Also, you're hurting, this is hurting my bottom line because I have got to make a budget that shows wages, insurance, and supplies. And when I'm not bringing in as much as my potential, I have a lot more customers, but the bottom line is still down here. Then I would like to see my bottom line raised up.
So I'm not a mathematician, but on a standard twenty-five hundred square foot house, if you would go up twenty-five dollars.
Ten cents, yeah.
Ten cents, yeah, twenty-five dollars. We're not asking for thousands.
That's why I'm sitting here going.
I move we approve her request for an increase to forty-five cents.
I'm going to second it because I'd like to.
Let's discuss it, let's discuss it.
But in the second to increase the pre-construction zoning permit, it's actually, is it a zoning permit? That's the correct name for it. Uh, from thirty-five cents to forty-five cents, discussion.
Zoning permit or building?
No, it's not a building permit. It is the zoning. Zoning permit.
Ah, yeah.
No, sir, yeah, thank you. Go back to what I was talking about just a minute ago. I haven't had a chance to look at last year's. I mean, I had it Friday, but I would really want to examine it a little closer. To the best of your knowledge, are the rest of our fees in line with our type of county? Our environment, the amount of people in Europe in a planning and zoning office? I mean, are we in line? I, I don't think we need to be the cheapest. Why are we the cheapest? We have expenses just like everybody else does.
No, I believe that, uh, if you look at, like a lot line vacation is fifty dollars if I do it in-house. It's three hundred dollars if I have to go to a board. I believe that fifty bucks, sometimes the research takes away that much. And the certifies and stuff like that. I believe we're out of line. I think we need to do, I think we, I agree with the forty-five cents. If you want to do it all like next month and look at all these fees because I believe that the price of certified now is not four dollars when it was here. It is now six something.
Yeah.
And I believe that we need to get in line here. And it's not like we have people running down the, it's not going to deter anything because we don't have that many S U Ps right now.
So it begs the question, you asked it last time, is how come you lowered it for last month?
Because the economy dipped. And we thought that that was what we thought.
So we're good. So my thought would be, yes, sir, my thought would be maybe we could rescind motion or change it to review this again next month after we look at all of them to see if we're in line. And I'd rather piecemeal it, I don't come back next month and say, well, let's change this one now. I'd rather do it all at once. My feeling would be let's postpone it for a month and get a chance to look at it.
Were you headed that way anyway?
Yes.
Jackie, I'm just curious, how, how often do you do comparative analysis with other like counties as to fee schedules?
At least once a year because every year I have to come back here and do the fee schedule. It's also interesting because there's only two counties in Colorado that do zoning. Us and.
No building permits, is that what you're saying?
No, uh, they have zoning. We call ours zoning permits because we do zoning. They do building permits.
I got a question for you. Do you want them to consider this line by line or are you suggesting just a flat, like twenty-five percent increase across the board or what's your recommendation?
Um.
She needs to think about it, I think.
I do.
Well, you were really just talking about any increase in the price of the zoning permit.
No, I actually was talking about reflecting on all of it. I would like to raise everything else a thousand dollars. A hundred dollars.
Going somewhere.
A hundred dollars.
So could I, could I make a friendly, uh, motion?
Yeah, may I participate in the discussion of this prior to making that motion? I agree with, I think where you're headed. My question, or I guess my comment is this, that I think this document, this planning and zoning fee schedule either does or would or could have some philosophy behind it. And this whole conversation about growth as it relates to the water augmentation plan, I think this document kind of probably will follow that same line of thinking depending on what we decide to do with it. People say there's no way you can control growth in Custer County and I just agree with that. This document right here can be part of the growth control if that's what the commissioner's willing to.
That's what our planning and zoning.
So I think there, there needs to be some thought and maybe discussion about that.
Well, before you, we'll draw it, let's think about it. She's been asking for this, there's no reason why we can't approve. Make a motion and then have another one to go, go check the rest of them out. She, that's what she settled on.
But to be a piecemeal, to do it all at once.
Yeah.
I'm not going to piecemeal that one. She's already got this in her mind. Do you, are we getting, is this the season for permits?
This is a season that's never stopped.
Right, okay.
It started last year and it's, it's ticking away. And then every year we do this. I do believe that we could do the forty-five cents now or we could do it next month when we just go through the whole thing.
I was wondering if there was a rush on this, why are you here now with it? I know it does around, but I.
Uh, every February it's on my agenda to do.
Uh, and I agree with Jay with the piecemeal thing. If we approve this now, then we want to come back next month and look at the rest of it.
We're going to come back next month and look at it anyway.
That's what I would like to do. Good evening. If you guys would agree, I'd really like to have a workshop where Jackie could come and sit down with us and we can go through this and look at it compared to other counties and discuss things like
Sure.
growth, how we are compared to other counties. And then we could make, you know, rational thoughts about what it is and then the following meeting, and we could do this before the next meeting, then go ahead and adopt it.
Yeah, we don't have, we can do it.
I mean, this is such an important thing, there's a lot of money that flows here. If you look at it, we're looking at what over a hundred thousand dollars comes in and planning and zoning permit. I think we ought to be fair with our constituency, but I think we should change ourselves also.
Thank you.
Ms. Jackie, gee, I forget how much a well permit is from the state of Colorado. Do you know that?
No, I do not.
A hundred dollars.
Hundred, okay. So, you know, you look at a zoning permit and then a septic permit and a well permit. And then most likely on an undeveloped piece of property, electrical, which I think there is an electrical permit plus the cost of the installation.
And the plumbing has to be.
And then, of course, once the building starts, yeah, there'll be plumbing in electrical for the interior. I was thinking about service, primary service coming through the property, so. Yeah, I would support looking at this again next month. Is, is it a timing thing? Statute say we have to approve it in February or?
No.
Is that your timing?
Okay.
Uh, would you be okay with us looking at this again? I agree, maybe have a workshop?
Sure.
How about we do it mid-month again? To have a workshop before that?
Yes.
Unless I went out.
This next week will be too full, crowded in.
I don't see the urgency in this. I mean, we're not going to stop or start someone's new home because of what we're going to discuss. We'll continue to live under the fees that you have now. And if in middle of March or end of March even, we agree to make an adjustment, we can make it effective.
And then, uh, if you get a better handle on what is involved like in an S U P and stuff like that.
That's what, I think the workshop will really help us. I think the workshop could really help us kind of, help us understand exactly what's involved. I like that idea because I think this is about a hundred fifty thousand dollar revenue each year. We ought to, it's not, you know, it's not, it's not chicken. We ought to discuss it, we want a good plan.
So Commissioner Candy, you're recommending we wait and do our workshop after our fifth and sixth meeting in March?
Yeah.
Is that what I understood you say?
Yeah, I would do it that, if there's a little more space there, put it in there. A lot of meetings.
Sixth, we're busy after the B O C C meeting.
I hope not by the seventh.
Uh, nor do I. I'm just thinking we should probably meet in town.
Works for me.
Would you want to meet in a workshop format on the seventh and talk about this?
I have a cop, my, uh, calendar with me, but right now it sounds good.
Let's pencil that in. Gentlemen, what time? Nine o'clock. Ms. Meredith, would you add that to the agenda? We need to post that as a workshop on Feb, March the seventh at nine o'clock. And that'll be a planning and zoning fee schedule workshop.
Can I go off topic for just one second, please?
Yes.
Discuss the counties for enough. I added an item to our commissioner's calendar.
Okay.
I don't remember what it was, but I did, it was a meeting that wasn't on there, so I just went ahead and added it. Are you okay with me doing that or do you want me just to send it to Meredith and let Meredith do that?
No, I think we agreed, we could all add stuff.
When you add stuff, we've just got to make sure we all get them.
Well, I mean, the only way you'll, I mean, once you add it, it's updated. Then you could just, the next time I go to your calendar, yeah, it'll be there.
Attainable housing on the twenty-eighth is what I added.
Okay.
So we're going to plan for the seventh, aren't we?
Yes. Yeah, two to three P M, like twenty-eighth, got it.
Zoning fee.
Nine to ten, whatever.
Yeah, probably nine to eleven or something like that.
Nine to nine fifteen.
Yeah. Commissioner's room.
Just tell us how it is, we'll, we'll, we can't hold it because it's a workshop. You'll tell us how it is. Somebody, I got it.
Next.
Uh, yes, I never did find page one of last year's document behind you.
What time did we say that?
Nine.
All night.
Thank you, Mr. Smith, I did get your email.
Very well.
Okay, we're good, Jackie?
Uh-huh, Terry Carpenter, septic. Uh, the state, uh, contacted Alyssa and Alyssa handled it at that end, a different state office. And then I got a report from the septic state. And when he called, he said that he had gotten a letter concerning this septic system not being installed and them using a porta potty and that they're dumping a bucket outside the house every once in a while. Well, that could be mop water, who knows? So, um, he said, haven't we discussed this before? And I said, yes. And he said that the porta potty at this time was sufficient. The problem is, is that Mr. Carpenter has been allowed many times to get this in order. He did give Ed nine hundred dollars. Ed has agreed that he'll just go ahead and install it. I told Ed that he didn't owe anybody a favor. And Ed's got this big job down in Los Ananas and as soon as Ed comes back, he said he would install the septic. But nine hundred dollars won't even cover the, well, and the components of.
Twenty-four hundred bucks.
Yeah, so, you know, I don't know, I may talk to Ed because I don't know if Ed feels compelled. I, he is a good guy, don't get me wrong, but you don't have to be that nice. And I, I, so I think that if, when Ed gets back, um, we might have to move forward in another direction.
If I may, Jackie, this has been on the agenda ever since I moved here twenty years ago, I think.
It seems, I know.
This is an ongoing, ongoing issue. I thought we'd put some deadlines on that instead of putting a cease and desist of your house. If you don't have anybody specific date, am I learning now that he's still on the, on the porta potty system as opposed to the septic system?
And I could see, I can see a couple of different scenarios. I can see the contractor not wanting to proceed because the ground's frozen and it's harder to dig and it's just. So if Ed comes back and says, I put it on hold until it's bought out, then I'm good to go. But in a couple of months, if this isn't out of control, we're going to have to do something.
That's where I was going, we must. I mean, there's a limit to what we can do. I feel for the neighbors. I agree with you, we don't know what's in the bucket. But we couldn't ask what could be in that bucket. And the neighbors, of course, know what's in that bucket or think they do. So I think it's only appropriate after all this time, we put the line in the sand and say, do or go, one of the two.
And I did.
I worked on that all night last night, okay?
I did call the, uh, Oak Disposal and yes, they are cleaning it regularly.
Good, that's what I'm gonna do my next question.
Okay.
Well, we're very compassionate, but then it comes a time when we have to say, I know something.
We are compassionate, is that a formal statement?
Excuse me, one of the commissioners compassionate, the other says I have with them all.
Thank you.
I'll just not say which.
Okay, I was gonna.
All right, so let's, let's figure out what to do with the motion to do the forty-five cents.
Sheriff request.
Fan in that or?
Yeah, I, I think Sheriff request you withdraw your motion.
I'll withdraw my motion.
So you certainly don't have to. Uh, motion was withdrawn, uh, on changing the fee schedule. Now we formally move on to your next item.
Okay, this is the last. This is the last P U D.
That better not happen again.
What was he doing?
Bored, sorry. Let's move on, Jackie.
Oh, you did, I just took a check and see what time it was.
This is the last P U D that Custer County had. Nothing has, uh, been done on it for over three years.
Does this P U D have a name?
Blessings, but blessings.
That's what I thought it was.
Humboldt Peak Partners. I would like to send a formal letter that says that now that this is done.
Done meaning?
You no longer have a P U D.
You said it was two years or three years. I mean, that's the time range, they were valid.
At least that we decided that if the time has expired, we have time to make the P U D expire. And I, I would know that we accept the recommendation.
So the red marks are the only homes built on this P U D? Yeah, they have little slashes, they don't.
There's two of them.
They all look red, you, five and four.
Yeah.
And moving second to, with, uh, void the P U D for.
Humboldt.
Peak.
Humboldt Peak Partners, is that correct?
Yes.
Discussion.
I don't think it's right. Is this a precedent or have we done this before? Ms. Jackie, have we, have we voided P U D before?
No, we don't have that many.
Just be first. If they come back and say, well, you could do something with it, just something scratch, is that what you have?
Then you have to go back before the planning commission with the recommendation to extend it because they're the ones that made the.
Void, there's nothing to extend, that's where I'm going with this. If we void it, I think, and I'm going to leave it to you, but I think they have something to scratch, there's nothing to extend.
Yeah, if the motion carries, there's no extending this, they will have to start over.
That's what I'm thinking, that's why I'm asking.
Well, and that's what her, you said it was a two-year window and then they, it expires, which you told us earlier.
Will this have any adverse impact on the two homes that are there?
No.
They've already got water augmented to them, so that.
They have their own water rights.
Let's back up a little bit. Commissioner Candy said, you already told us that it expires in two years. I believe you were talking about a zoning permit expires.
She said everything expires.
P U Ds as well.
P U Ds.
And this was started in two thousand and seven. And we're dealing with it in two thousand and nineteen.
When was it approved?
March of two thousand and seven.
I guess the two-year period. Further discussion? Have they received any prior notice?
No, that's what I would like to do is prior notice.
Oh.
You need to explain in that though.
Well, the motion is.
You have rules.
Correct.
We let that go for whatever reasons.
Well, and then I, what, it's because of his staggered half, the dwelling permits. It's not, it's not that, yeah, he was approved in two thousand and seven and then he has. And then he has...
It was updated every time.
Two years on this and two years on that. And he can keep doing this. But he hasn't made any movement in three years.
Okay.
The motion before the group is to with, to nullify, avoid his PUD. I don't think that's what you're asking us to do.
I would like permission to have Mr. Smith and myself draft a letter that says, "We are going to void your PUD."
We are going to, or we're gonna put you on notice?
Well, that is the notice.
Big difference.
Well, if we're going to, then it's already done.
Then the motion can stand.
We have to. It's in the zoning rings.
If you just want to give him notice that you're thinking about doing it, then that's different.
So it's not really prior notice. It's just notice that it's happened.
Okay. So then I'll let the motion stand and...
Well, let's, let's, let's fore that in a second. So, so you're saying you're giving him notice you're thinking about them? Is that what you said? Or you're going to avoid it? And so what's his recourse? Nothing, right? Because it's expired. Is that right? So you just... So what's the difference between prior notice and telling them you just...
It's not really prior notice. It's just notice that it's happened.
Yeah?
Prior notice implies you're giving him a chance to...
To rectify it. That's what I thought. That's what I'm trying to get at. And you're not. It's expired. Okay, so you need to work that language.
You want to notify him that it's no longer...
That's right.
Valid if we vote that direction. Okay. So, yeah, motion will stand. Any further discussion? The gentleman proceeded to vote. All in favor of voiding the PUD for Humboldt Peak Partners that was approved in 2007? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, nay?
Jackie, do you want to take a stab at drafting the letter?
Sure. Do I take a stab at giving me your stamp? What's that?
Next item, ma'am.
Now, we all know what Senate Bill 35 was after this AUG Plan. That, the way the AUG Plan worked, Senate Bill 35 thought it would be a grand idea to not allow these smaller subdivisions due to the water. Okay, what that did to Custer County was we have a lot of landowners who have large acreage. They did not have to come through the county to get their property subdivided in 35-plus acres. Um, I would like to suggest that we got to have a mechanism because this is getting... We have large acreage that could still impact us. Yes, you get a subdivision and you didn't have to go through the subdivision rings of the zoning office, which I agree is quite expensive. This way you can build your own roads, do whatever you want, but you're still impacting Custer County. You're coming out on Custer County roads. You are using the ambulance, the sheriff's department, road and bridge. And I would like to, um, enact an impact fee. An impact fee was enacted on Roger Camper subdivision across from Ace Hardware. 5% of every lot sold was supposed to be given to the county. No one collected the impact fee. And when the foreclosure went up and our Tony was going to purchase it, is when I started looking through the paperwork and found that there was an impact fee of 5% on all those lots sold. So we don't set, like, for every lot sold, you have to give the county 200 bucks. We set an impact fee of 5% or whatever you decide. We could do that during a workshop if you agree to this on every lot sold because, uh, we still have impact in Custer County. We're not getting the money from these subdivisions like we used to. Because why would you come through the county and spend thousands of dollars when the state of Colorado allows you to do it by filing paperwork?
Uh, so your impact fee would only be if a subdivision was built in the county, not within the two towns?
No, we don't do it the two towns.
Only in the county. And only...
Thirty-five. It's greater than 35 acres.
Subdivided is when we would have an impact fee.
Only...
Would the impact fee be when each lot is sold or 5% at the time it's subdivided? 5% on each lot that the subdivider has to pay?
If you're, if we did it smart, I would say the developer has to pay it. Because who's going to keep track for many years on a subdivision down the road?
Well, don't, doesn't the assessor get that? Well, don't we get notices of, uh, beats, beats across the county all the time? You'd get more money if you based it on the price. The upfront fee, what are we gonna charge it? How, what do we base the fee against? The value of the...
So the developer, like, let's, and I'm just gonna use this one. Eagle Springs Ranch, across from the Trout Ranch. Those lots are $200,000 for 35 acres. And then if they resell, yeah, then the person... So let's say to the developer, "What are you gonna sell your lots for?" And if he says 200,000 apiece, then he owes us 5% of all those.
So if he says 5,000?
Just kind of suggested. How about, that's true. What if we said, just a flat case, we don't have to worry about, because they may tell us to sell for 100 and they come back and ask for money back, something like that. I'm just, I see problems with presenting. We go and say, "If you subdivide it to five-acre lots, it's X amount of dollars. 10-acre lots, it's this amount." Or how much per acre? So 35 acres would be 35 times the one-acre lot fee. I mean, just a set fee for everybody. You want to subdivide, there is a $75 per acre fee, $100 per acre fee, whatever the number is. And that's just a set fee that every developer must pay before we approve a subdivision.
And it's an impact fee. But I believe if we do some research, I think the impact fees now have to be used for certain things. Uh, you can't give it back to Jackie.
Yeah, it would have to go into the general fund, I'm assuming.
No, I think, and I also think it might have to go to emergency services funds.
Well, we could look into that.
Uh, so I'm just running this by today because I really do believe that, um...
I think we need some time to think about it.
Your point is 100% correct, I feel.
Right process.
Because if you have an 80-acre lot and there's two houses on it, the services that two families will use will be significantly less if you break it into 10-acre lots. Now we have 20 families on there and there's gonna be more...
But don't leave, hold on, Dave.
Ambulance service, more fire service, more sheriff service because the population will increase. The impact to the county will be greater by doing that. I absolutely agree that this is a stunning idea.
But, but I agree. But she's, well, she's bringing up, that's already covered under subdivisions that are smaller than 35 acre... 35-acre lots. She's, she's trying to get to the point that big branches that are, let's say, 6,000 acres and they want to cut it up.
That's what I brought it up because of the Senate Bill 35. We gotta do something.
We gotta, we gotta catch it. That we...
But we could also do it on the smaller acreage.
Well, sure, but don't we do that already?
No.
I thought when we approved it, they, there was a fee.
There is a fee. It goes through the subdivision range. The only subdivision that had the impact fee was the last one that was done in 2005. And no one kept track of it.
Right.
And so when the bank got it back, I snagged the bank and then...
Okay, so we need to cover both conditions. And we need to, we need to come up, we need to think about it. We gotta figure out what's logical. Because to me, you know, if you, if you fit, play a fat, pay a flat fee. If we're in a boom, just because he starts off at $200,000 aside, it could be $500,000 when we're losing the impact.
Well, a couple of things, I'll get to in just a second, sir. If I'm a developer and to Clint's point, I have to pay this upfront and it truly is an impact fee. And I've got 100 lots and I've sold two. I'm gonna squall about you wanting to charge me an impact fee for the 80 lots because they have not impacted this county one little bit until they're sold.
That's right.
Oh, I agree, but that's the price of being a developer.
It could be. But I think that's what we have to consider is saying, are we, we're aware of that and we're willing to take, take it on the chin when a developer says, you know, "It's not fair." I, I would agree, it probably isn't fair.
But you will also notice that, not notice, but there is a lot of other counties. And I'll get that data where some of them... The problem is, is you can make 50 rules you want, but it's the enforcement of the rules. So you gotta think of when you do an impact fee or any fees, who's gonna enforce it? And how good are they gonna be at enforcing it? Because...
We've already got a proven track record of not very good.
Yes.
Can we postpone this to our workshop as well? Jackie, would you agree with that? We need to have some in-depth discussion about this.
So I think we could have a lengthy discussion.
Well, let's add that on that workshop as well is a discussion on proposed impact fees for subdivisions. Correct? Jackie, subdivision impact fee.
Tom? Yes.
Thank you. We'll get that on the agenda.
Did you have something to say?
I was just wondering if Mr. Smith is gonna give a bit of maintenance company.
Yes, thank you. I kind of forgot. Go ahead, sir.
I guess I'm a little bit confused. What's the definition of subdivision? If, if a rancher has a parcel of the land out there and he wants to sell a quarter off his land, 160 acres, is that classified as a subdivision? Is he gonna have to pay 5% of that?
Yes. You are dividing your land.
If you live in Custer County, you're gonna have to pay 5%. If I, if I divide my ranch in half, I've gotta pay 5%.
Well, we're not sure how much it is. It may be a flat fee, but maybe constant is correct.
He's got a big, good point.
Well, see, what you could do, and that could be part of the workshop. If he's saying, uh, two, he's got 160 acres and he's taking two 80s off of it. Okay, we could do 10 or more lots, five or more lots. We could do that too.
Yeah. Great point. I don't...
Don't get me wrong. I'm not thinking about subdividing in the least, but...
Anybody should have the right to sell a piece of their property.
Isn't subdivision defined by Kiowa, state of Colorado? That would be the definition of a subdivision. Geez, you got a lawyer here?
I said we got a lawyer here.
I didn't bring my subdivision rings.
I've never heard of it. It isn't as fun.
Yeah, it's a great point. Good point. Thank you.
That was...
That's right, there is.
Yeah, because then you're actually...
It's raw ground.
We're back to talking about property rights. Do you have a right to sell part of your property?
Or give it to your kids. And you're not gonna pay 5% to do that.
Or anyone else. I mean, obviously, it's a great point.
Minimum lot.
Minimum number of lots or whatever, yeah.
Give the definition away.
So I won't ink his house today.
Pardon?
I won't ink his house today.
What else, Miss Jackie?
Uh, before I left, a gentleman called. Said he got a call about Airport Road from Florida. The gentleman that had the legal grow on Airport Road called him. And he would like to go in there and clean it up. Uh, he was also told that that property is in the process of being seized. And so then I said...
Who is this that you're talking to?
Barry. Last name's Barry?
That's not the owner.
No, I'm talking to the cleaner.
I thought you said the owner wanted to come in.
The owner called the cleaner. The cleaner called me.
Got you.
Did I say that right?
Yeah, you did not say that.
No, that's not what you said, but, but I followed you now, so...
So the owner wants to clean it up.
Okay, fine. So what, what he said is that the cleaner said that the owner told him that the county was gonna seize that property. And he does not want to be involved in something because he's...
Who's he now that doesn't want to be involved?
The cleaner.
Okay.
So the cleaner, I told the cleaner that I would check. And Mr. Byerly said that the DA does not want to pursue that. So...
Pursue what? Cleaning it or seizing it? Now you're talking in circles here.
Seizing it.
Okay.
Why would the DA clean it?
I have no idea. It's your, just trying to make sure I understand what you're saying.
Okay. My signs say that this structure is uninhabitable, which means that you cannot live in this structure.
I understand that.
But I told him that I would require him to get the clean, the environmental people up there to make sure that the THC level was down. Because I wouldn't be cleaning it if the THC...
You told the cleaner that. Have you talked to the owner?
No.
Okay, so when you say he, you mean the cleaner?
Yes.
Okay.
So I believe that there would be no problem if the environmental said that the THC level wasn't bad. Not to live in it, just clean it.
So I guess my first question, just common sense question, why in the world would he want to clean it if he thinks it's gonna be seized? I'm not buying the whole thing here.
I think he's worried about his money getting paid to do it.
I think he's wanting to get it so he can get somebody else to live in there. It's my assumption.
That's the owner, hey?
Yeah, I mean, he's the owner, but nonetheless. So you're asking, should we allow...
I have no problem with that if I follow the same protocol that I followed with the other people.
Oh, we've had other, the illegal grows? Go ahead, sir.
So the product, the way the process works is if, the only way that the owner would believe that property is going to be seized is one, is one, he's been through this before with this illegal activities. Other properties that he owns, or he gets a notice from the county and that the only way the county can initiate, I'm sorry, the county cannot initiate seizure processes. That has to be initiated by the district attorney who has articulated on more than one occasion that she is unwilling to initiate any of those activities. So we, I would be willing to bet my life that she did not send him a letter, even though I have made more than one request to the DA's office to do that. But I would say she never sent him a letter saying that...
And she didn't share it with me and she did.
I'm sorry?
She for the record being the DA.
That's Mrs. Johnson, Lord. So, so the owner probably is, I would be one to bet, everything I own, that he did not receive a letter saying that that's gonna be seized. So he's either operating off an assumption that is, you know, misgiven or he's wanting to just make it habitable again. The second thing is, is I would, so the THC level, at least in my mind, isn't the biggest concern. It's the mold issue that would, that comes with that that's really poses the health, uh, health risks. And then lastly, there is, the house has been cleaned out now. We did a civil standby last week with the individuals that we arrested that were living there when we did the bust. They went in and recovered all of their personal property. So there shouldn't be any reason for them to break into that place again and take more stuff.
Who's that? The people you busted?
Yeah, the people that we arrested that were living in there and growing the marijuana.
Now, when you say cleaned out, you're talking about their personal effects, not furniture?
Oh, they may have. I, I wasn't there. I wasn't the one that did it. But, I mean, they had a trailer and stuff there to, to take. So they took, you know, the larger part of, part of their, their property out of there. So it's essentially empty, you know? Someone at some point had broken into that place.
There's still broken windows and that kind of stuff.
Uh-uh. Yeah, we're not fixing that. That's the owner's responsibility.
I suppose this may come to a motion. I can tell you, gentlemen, right now, I will not support anything about this property. I was there. That whole property was flew in the face of our county, was, everything about it was illegal. I won't support to do anything to that property other than accept receivership from it, from the DA or the federal government. I don't care if the place ever gets cleaned. I hope it doesn't. I hope the mold owner takes it and the guy loses it all. I'm done. I will not support this. I don't care if it gets cleaned or not.
Take it, take it.
I'm not sure you can deny it.
That's why I...
We have a cease and desist, right?
Yeah.
Do not inhabit it.
But you can't, you can't stop a protest, like you're telling me that I can't bring somebody in to clean my barn out.
If it's cease and desist because of mold?
Cease and desist until he makes it habitable.
Somebody has to clean it up eventually.
You're saying, you're not saying I can't access my property, you're saying that my property is uninhabitable right now, so I'm like, okay, so I want to make it habitable. Well, how can you prevent me from that? And again, I'm not, I'm not, I'm on board with you about that property, it's a pain in my backside, but however, there's still due process.
Let's look at the bright side. He might clean it up and put it up for sale. And we have this huge broken window.
All right, so the bottom line is, it's his place. He wants to get somebody to clean it up.
Yes.
He's contacted you to, or you got a guy to clean it now, the guy that wanted to clean it is concerned about doing it because...
Doors are taped shut.
Why is this a commissioner issue? I don't understand.
Because we have a cease and desist order on it.
But the cease and desist is to live in it, right? Not cease and desist to clean it. I don't think this is a commissioner issue.
Maybe you're wrong.
Well, it's not just cleaning, it's broader issue. What do we do with that property? The DA isn't going to do anything. I have one suggestion, just to toss out as an idea. Molly Chilson could appoint me or some local attorney as a deputy district attorney to handle this as a civil matter and move through that whole process to add the property, declare it public nuisance and where we could forfeit it and sell it and get that maybe...
I copied you on the emails that I've sent to her saying, hey, we request that you initiate seizure process on this place. It's valued, when it was sold, it was sold for 230,000 roughly.
That's very different than what has occurred. Appoint...
It is, it is.
...Mr. Smith to handle it for you, so you don't have to lift your fingers to...
Agreed, agreed. My point, my point was going to be that, so the value on it's 230, we'll say, and it is free and clear, there is no, there's no lien on it or anything like that. So if we were, if she would allow Mr. Smith to do that, I mean, the county is looking to, you know, if we could seize it and then sell it.
Well...
I mean, you're looking at some significant seizure funds.
I agree with all of what's been said. However, guys, it's, let's give the owner the benefit of the doubt. We all think he's running a drug ring, but let's say, it could be me renting my house after I left and somebody threw some crap in there and now it's my property, I want to clean it up and I want to rent it to somebody else or I want to move back into it. Somehow, there's due process here that has to be done. You can't just seize it because, you know, if it were to stay that way, that's a different story. But if it's, he wants to clean it up, he's got the right to do that and he got the right to sell it. Or, you know, until then, we can't, it's not abandoned. If it is abandoned, then that's a different story, go through a different process.
Well, he gets no benefit of the doubt from me, but I will operate within the laws.
Right, but you got to operate within the law. I agree, he's probably crooked as the day is long. I don't...
No problem.
Respectfully. Respectfully. I feel differently. I feel he's not on one occasion, but two cases allowed illegal activities a little bit. I mean, we're not talking 13 plans, we're talking about a major...
It sounded like I told you...
Knew about it, failed to do anything. I think due process would come in if we, the county, who's Counselor Smith, brought this to court and started this procedure, he would have total due process to tell the judge why we're wrong and why he should...
Right, that's fair.
I'm thinking, I wasn't aware that Molly could appoint someone else to do this. I'm learning this this morning and I, I think she might be amenable to that just because she doesn't have to do it, won't take any of her resources out of the letter or whatever process she needs to go through. And I think, and I agree with you, due process is a, I mean, that's the foundation of our constitution.
Right.
But he'll have that due process. He's already shown to us that he is irresponsible, has allowed illegal activities to go on, that he knew about. It wasn't like you rented your house, came in six months later and found illegal activities going on there and you're shocked, okay? I mean, he obviously knew what was going on, he allowed it to happen. He may have condoned it, from what we know, he may have paid some of the money and it was sold. I don't know. But the bottom line is, I think we would have, my personal opinion would be, let's pursue with Molly, see if we can get Counselor Smith appointed as a deputy for this, you know, to close specific power of attorney is what I would call it, or I don't know what the real term is, to handle this one issue.
What would you do, Clint?
Well, I haven't thought this through a whole lot, but if I'm going to, if she even appoints me as the deputy district attorney, I would expect that you hold a little money out of, you know, which you're paying her to pay me for that. The statutory procedure allows for the district attorney to be reimbursed once the property is sold, and I think she, on pace, we go along on it, because there's a, it's divided up according to statute where that money goes if it's sold. My guess would be this guy may just default and walk away from it, you know, if we actually started that kind of proceeding, because I think it's a cost of doing business.
He has to prove that he's got intent to do it.
He has to, innocent property owners can be held responsible for what's going on there, even if, and this guy obviously knows, that's why I think he would just walk away from it. Like I said, it's a cost of doing business, probably made 10 times what that house is worth from the state.
Well, he's affiliated with eight properties, so two in our county and six in Fremont County right there on the west, just go to county law. I mean, for him to say that he doesn't know what's going, what's going on is...
I think he just needs to be, get it started and that would probably be 90% of it right there.
Gentlemen, by consent, are you okay with Attorney Smith pursuing that conversation with the DA?
Yeah, I think so.
About twice.
But, go ahead.
Chairman, I think we ought to do a motion.
Great.
I think it's significant enough where we make a motion that we authorize our county attorney, that we appoint Attorney Smith as a deputy district attorney with the approval of Molly Chilson, our district attorney, for the sole purpose of commencing proceedings to take this house that has been used as a drug house for multiple times.
Okay, and before we second the motion, you said that we appoint him as a deputy DA. I don't agree.
That's correct. Could he be appointed?
Well, the DA will coin a, will ask...
That we request the DA to appoint.
Request the DA.
I'll second the motion. We're moving to second it to request the DA to appoint Attorney Smith as a deputy DA to deal with the property. I don't know the address of it, but we can look that up.
310 Airport Road.
Pardon me?
310 Airport Road.
Well, be careful because it's not a vehicle.
Oh, County Road 310.
This County Road 310, it's like 1275 or 1175.
Third house on the left.
Yeah, house in question.
House in question. Further discussion?
Yeah, one question then. Jackie, what did you ask for originally?
Permission to let the cleaner go in and clean it.
Right, so we got to deal with not doing that, right? But how's that handled in the motion?
They won't, won't be handled in this motion at all.
Could somebody second that?
Yes.
Yes, Tom.
I did. I will come back to that.
Can we comment?
Yes.
Okay, so since this motion has been made, then...
Only pertaining to Assistant DA.
Then I think cleaning's off the table and this guy is really the electrician.
Well, which guy is the electrician?
The cleaning.
Okay. Further discussion? Here, gentlemen, proceed to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, negative. Harry, do you still want some direction from the commissioners about the cleaning situation?
No, I think I've got it in my hand.
What is next? Next item?
That's it. I just got to give him a follow and that's...
Oh, your documents were just for us. We don't have to go through them.
The letters.
No, there's a cease and desist in there.
And do you want to place a cease and desist or it's...
No, not for a couple of months.
Cease and desist?
No. Highland Ranch.
Okay. Yeah, let's delve into a lot of this, move more detail in that workshop, one hundred minutes. Okay. You go, Ms. Jackie? With consent, Chair would request about a three-minute break. Are we in consensus about, gentlemen?
Get out of the table.
Any unfinished business, gentlemen?
No.
Nor do I. New business, we'll allow public comment before we vote on any items that come up as an action item. First item on the new business is the detention nurse staffing proposal. We've been provided a copy of all that. I would defer to Mr. Byerly.
Hey, gentlemen, me, you have to...
So nice to have you here.
I didn't make a...
We've got copies of all that.
So, I don't think you've got the MOU and the...
No, we don't have it.
So that's, you can, that's just the three, you can do that.
Okay, thank you.
That's just what we did in-house on that.
All right.
So, as we talked about in the last meeting and then moving forward, so what we've worked out with Finance, Hobby and of course, the public health nurse, Melissa, life and good, and we're currently working with the medical director for public health as well, but essentially what we would do is, the public health nurse would move from 32 hours, typically, right now, she's at 32 hours a week paid by the county for public health nurse services and her duties as such. We would move that number to 40 hours a week, of which 32 would be as public health duties, 8 hours as a detention nurse, of which, as you can see by the explanation there, I gave you the different duties that she would have. Now, she is not a salaried employee, she is an hourly employee, so she would submit a time sheet on a monthly basis outlining her hours and in those hours, you know, she would specify time spent as a public health nurse, time spent as the detention nurse, and she would be paid for that, so...
May I ask her real quick?
Yes.
Point of clarification, yes, sir. Just to reiterate, what you just said was that she would turn in her time sheets for hours worked, we're not automatically paying her for eight hours.
That's correct. That's correct. So when I say move to 40 hours, meaning that she's allowed up to 40 hours in a week, or, yeah, in a week for both of those responsibilities.
Correct.
So, as we, as we stay here, so we're predicting that on average she would work eight hours in the jail, but that, that doesn't mean that maybe in a week, in one week she would work 14 because we were busy or we had a, an individual in the jail that had, was having a medical crisis, something along those lines. And, and I insisted that we work through this hourly, because if she works 14 hours, then in my mind, she deserves to be paid for 14 hours. And in turn, the following week, maybe she only works three hours, then we pay her for three hours. And so we're estimating that on average it's going to be eight hours a week.
That would she receive overtime pay for any excess of eight hours that are given to her?
In a week, you mean. I would, I would say it's going to depend on what her hours are for that, for that week. If she exceeded 40 hours, then I believe she gets paid overtime now, just as a public health nurse, so, so yes, I would, I would think so.
Would you concur with that, Kelly, from your history of working with the salary stuff?
That it's paid on 40?
Well, she's 32 now and she works an additional eight, that gets her to 40, and then she had to work an additional four more hours with the sheriff. Those would be overtime hours.
I think so, because I think that overtime's based on 40 instead of eight, like...
As an hourly employee.
Yeah.
And to, to the point, gentlemen, this will not move her to a full-time employee, or, sorry, to a salaried employee. She'll stay an hourly employee. She is full-time, 30 hours a week is full-time.
Yeah, so, so it doesn't change anything with her withdrawing, with her retirement, doesn't change anything because she already is classified as a full-time employee, 32 hours, so none of that changed. It's really, the only effect is, is we're just kind of paying her up to eight hours a week more and then that will come out of my budget, so it'll be, it'll be categorized through Finance. She'll do a time sheet and then Finance will take the 32 hours out of the public health nurse fund and the eight hours out of my money in the jail to pay her and it'll be clean. We've worked through all those details, so we think we've got it covered.
And that, to that point real quick, sir, because we haven't talked about this since we last met with you, that extra eight hours a week would come out of 420.101, which is a jail account. It's not the sheriff's, it is out of his budget, but it's a line item specifically 101, which is...
Remove the tension.
So who's the public health director? The title, you got two good ideas.
She is.
Well, you got three signatures. You got a public health nurse, you got a public health, medical director.
Oh, medical director is...
Is, are they Lisa or...
No.
That's not, is it?
Let me, Dr. Beck.
Okay.
All right. Oh, yeah, yeah. We have a stipend to oversee nurses. So I have a man with a question. Why would we not want to move her to a salary employee, adjust the salary to 40 hours and another hour to 40? Because the outlook, 80% of retirement would be public health, 20% would be for the sheriff department, that's 32 and 40. If we went to just a flat salary position, I don't have to worry about if she spent 40 and a half hours a week.
Fair enough, that's a...
Next week, she'll be out working quite as many, I understand that, but she's on call. I think a salary, it would, it would actually amount to a salary increase going to full us, because what I do is, based on annual salary, based on 40 hours working up to 32 she's working now, I don't have to worry about what the impacts could be.
As a Tionne benefit.
And that's a, and that's an extremely valid point. Quite frankly, when I started to, to really get into the details of this, I was working from the assumption she was on salary, because many comments had been made about, she rarely worked less than 32 hours, it was always more than that. And so, in my mind, right, if I have an employee that I'm paying 40 hours a week, I keep very close tabs on anything over 40 hours because it's, it's a higher cost to me. So I assumed she was salary. And working from that assumption, then Finance said, oh, no, no, she's just hourly, so on and so forth, and so Finance is the one that actually suggested doing what I explained to you, but I tracked the salary.
I like the idea of salary, anyway, you know what to budget. I mean, because you, you really don't know what to budget for her because you don't know how much of that overtime's going to be allocated back to you. I mean, at some point, she's going to say, well, I worked 12 hours instead of the extra eight for the sheriff, and it's going to become an accounting issue for Donna to segregate. And if I just pay her a salary and we know that she has eight hours to go to year, she may have free time on her 32 hours and be, oh, I don't care.
Yeah.
It's all for the county benefit where that money goes, so...
Well, a conversation I had with Donna, a couple of things. One, there was some discussion, I think we had it as a group, about this is not really a trial and error thing, but we don't know for sure how this is all going to go. It may end up being such that we need to look at a different person to do this. Donna's idea was, I think Donna is in favor of looking at her as an individual moving to a full-time position, irregardless of this, in 2020, with irrespect to what we're talking about today. But she said, that's to me down the road, and I said, okay. And then secondly was this idea of, we don't know how many hours it's going to take, so let's do it on an hourly basis. And then if she did go full-time, obviously that changes exempt, non-exempt status if and when we decide to put her on full-time. I think your conversation about putting her on full-time has merit, but I don't think it has anything to do with this right now.
She's full, she's paid time, but I'm sorry.
Well, I think you're, I think you're convalescing your, I don't know if that's the right word, but I think you're basing full-time and salary, because she is full-time right now, 32 hours.
I meant salary, I didn't mean to say full-time. She is full-time, no question. I meant salary, thank you.[1742.87]
That's, that's what I thought.
So, yeah, Donna suggested we look at this next year as going to a full 40-hour week.
Why would she wait those times?
Well, I think it was kind of, let's see, let's see how this goes, basically.
Is she a contractual employee?
No.
Well, we're an at-will county, but no, she's a, she's a full-time employee.
But, does she sign a contract?
Yeah.
Question, and I think she did, if I remember correctly, I could be wrong.
Get designs on.
Because every year, you appoint us again.
We don't sign a.
That's different, decided a contract.
I think she may have signed an actual contract stating that here the duty says public health nurse.
That's a pretty darn question.
I kind of remember that, but I, oh.
And that's the challenge, I mean, this is the second time we've had this meeting, Donna was the third to be able to.
Well, she, she conveyed to me that she was behind this plan, that the, that the line items were in place, and she was good with this.
She can pay it.
Why we move, we approved the, the, I'll call it a package, it's three, three pages or something, approved the appointment of Alyssa Live and Good for the jail detention nurse, based on eight hours a week. Is there a second?
I'm saying.
The movement seconded to approve Alyssa Live and Good for eight hours a week as a detention nurse staff, yes, sir?
I, I would, I would only add that, if you decide to, to vote in favor of this or approve this, but I, I would say that in, that we plan on in either two or three months, that I come back to you and I, and I fill you in on how this is going, and I can break down at that point, you know, once we get moving, how much time she's actually spending at the detention center, and if in fact, I see that it's, it's taking more than eight hours, or, or less, whatever, that maybe we can have Donna come as well, or maybe Alyssa as well, and we could, we could talk about maybe going to a salary instead of an hourly wage in order to make it more uniform, I, I think what Mr. Prince brought up is a valid.
I do too.
Point.
I, I was not going to support it, but with your comment, I will, because I think your point's really great, and I, and I appreciate all of this.
Yeah.
You don't know, you don't know how many hours it will be, you come back and say to us, look, she's putting in 12, 14 hours, then we have to change the discussion, so, you know, I support it the way it is, but I, I think your point's.
And then we can just decide if you want me to, in two or three months, and we, and I can have it broken down, charted.
Give it a three-month period and see how it goes.
Fair enough.
Is that okay with you, sir?
Yeah, no, I think she's under the impression that it would, that's where we were headed, is a salary position, she knew it wouldn't be more than 40 hours sometimes, unless.
We don't know.
We don't.
That's right.
Yeah, we don't.
And that's why, I didn't want to call it trial or error, or a trial period, but that's kind of what we're looking at.
Yeah, we kind of just got to dip our toe in the water and see how it works, and then go.
Uh, I'd ask a question, Sheriff Riley, if you arrested a female tonight, 8 o'clock, do you hold her overnight, or does she transport immediately?
No, she transports immediately.
Okay, no need for?
We bring her to the, to the jail, we, we do our processing, because she is technically our inmate, even though she's going to be transported to Fremont County, so we get all of that done, but then, we take her to Fremont County, and because she's housed there, they do the medical.
Got it, okay.
Analysis on.
But if you felt there was an issue right then and there, you would call Mrs. Alyssa to come look at her, would you not, I mean, if she was throwing up, sick, or something?
So we would, we would either do that, or many times, if we have someone that is displaying some concerning behavior, or, you know, conditions, we, we take them to the hospital and get a medical clearance, Fremont County will require that they go to St. Thomas More and get a medical clearance.
Before they get there.
So, so we wouldn't bother Miss Live and Good, huh?
Okay, thank you.
Further discussion? Hearing them proceed, both, all in favor, say aye.
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 I would comment.
Uh, go ahead.
Your comment is, I'm approving this, but I really do want to have the three-month discussion again.
So we'll, we'll talk, so we're starting March 1st, so we'll go March, April, May, and we'll plan right that first week in June.
It's a week, too, a, a monthly, it doesn't, I just want to revisit the issue.
Yep.
So we'll stick that on to May, if you need some.
Let's do June, let's do like the first, first or second meeting in June, that way I have three, four months.
All right, okay, I'll call for the vote again, I know, just so I make sure I hear it, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay. Thank you, sir, appreciate your work on that.
Nice.
I think we're covering some serious bases. CDPHE Landfill Grant, next item business, as always, Jackie, it was a huge pleasure. Good morning, sir.
I'm trying to hear if Rusty.
How are you?
Okay, good.
You call in, he could make us on.
Okay.
You are just as.
Rusty didn't know that, Rusty?
No, thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Here's one, did I only have one up, because we're probably not going to vote for it anyway, but it's for, anyway, it's here to get your blessings on a grant we're applying for, a Skidsteer for recycling. Okay, well, let's start with the, that's where you want to start with, Skidsteer?
Yeah.
Okay, heard that while you're here.
Yeah, it's, it's probably already been written, but we just need your approval to send it to the, to the, recycling resources economic opportunity program.
Right, and I do not believe it's been written.
Uh, they're working on it, the guy's name is Steven, Steven.
Steven Caffey, yep, 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 I've been in conversation with him about that, they actually, they spoke to me via email about requesting our office to write this grant, and so I, I'm, it's not been written yet, I know that, so, but anyway, go ahead, sir.
Well, anyway, we have an opportunity to get a Skidsteer with no matching funds from the county, and it's basically a grant that they offer to small counties, recycling programs, to get equipment, and since we've never applied for anything, any equipment for, for our recycling program, we think we have a good chance of getting this piece of equipment, it's something we could use, right now, we either hire out somebody, or we get the county, the Roman Bridges Equipment to come do this, would make life a whole lot easier, I could do my planning a little easier, I could, I'd be more advantageous to me, in doing what I'm doing, of course, so that, that is basically what it is, is we have an opportunity to get something that won't cost the county any money.
Right, perfect, I know, I looked at this history on this grant to other counties, and it was, I was pleasantly surprised at the stuff that they were funding, including Skidsteers, this would not be their first, they, they've got track record to doing that, and I know you provided us a list here of stuff that would be included in this, and I just kind of scanned it, do you think it would come with forks and a bucket?
Uh, we would.
Check it out that way?
Rusty told me it did, when I was talking to him.
And it's also open to other implements later on, and it would be open to the whole county for usage, I wouldn't believe it would be totally.
Rusty said it's smaller than the one they had before.
Yeah, it's one size smaller.
But it's big enough.
It does the same job.
I just think we'd be remiss if we didn't try to get forks and a bucket on this grant, and not have to turn around and try to.
We, we've been, we, we had one out, we had it out there, test, do it, and test it, and just to see.
Oh, they brought one out?
If it'll work for us.
Give them.
It only has one problem, we have to put. No, it's, it's, it's like a backstop, so that when we pick up those bales, when they slide back, they all slide into the glass, and it sits up about.
That's good.
Almost higher than the glass does, so that way, and this one, what it comes with is real low, and it is, that's the only thing we found that.
Hold on, an extension?
Yeah, it's kind of like a, a safety backstop on the fork, so, we pick up two bales at a time, and they do slide, and we put them at an angle, carry them up the ramp into the semi.
Um, yeah, I'm in favor of applying, of pressing on with this, personally, I, I want to have, if we need to, some discussion about who's going to write this grant. I would move that we authorize the landfill to move forward with the plan for this Skidsteer.
Seconded.
The movement seconded to authorize landfill to move forward with their grant application for a Skidsteer, discussion.
Why is it, we're, we declined the extended warranty?
I haven't looked through this, so I can't speak to that, no, well, Commissioner Cannon would want to know why we were declining the extended warranty?
Ah, I don't know, this was a, this was a quote from.
Must be a price deal.
Rusty, and I do not know that answer.
We could, we could, well, we're going to extend warranty, we should, but we, I did have a conversation with the gentleman who did this, he wanted to know if this was for real, and I told him, you absolutely, absolutely for sure, we need a Skidsteer, and he was.
It would make life easier, and it's open to the whole county, I mean, I'd say, New Justice Center, and the sheriff would like to drill holes, we'd get an auger head, and he could put all this posted, you know?
They were really working.
Now, you said you talked to the gentleman, who was that, I mean, somebody from Fort Rivers, or?
No, who was, who was offering the grant, I forgot to do.
Steve Taff, Steve Taff.
Yes, I spoke to him, he just wanted to know, is the county aware that you're asking this, I said, we've had multiple discussions, and we're very much.
And I told him personally that I was having a meeting today, that he was invited to come, so.
And he was fine, he was just doing his due diligence, and I didn't want to comment on that, so, this is for real, I believe it's a real grant.
And we have a pretty good chance of getting, and there is a chance that, that we may get aced out, but, being, so, we are, first time we've ever asked for anything from them, and we have lots, everything we do is volunteer work, and we, we do 238,000 pounds of cardboard, and we have to move it somehow, so.
He seemed very positive to me, but.
You're right, who knows?
Without a trial, so.
Uh, yeah, and he spoke in his email to me about Joni Liebman and himself working on this grant, wanted to know if it would be okay with commissioners, if we asked Meredith to author it, well, therein lies my question, I tried to pull this app, this application up, I couldn't get to it because it didn't have the password, were you able to ever get to that?
I emailed a few people.
Okay, haven't heard that, so, I just, I think we as commissioners need to be a little careful, certainly this would be a great asset to the county, I'm not saying that it wouldn't be worth Meredith helping with that, but I just think we need to be a little cautious about what we allow Meredith to take on, what we don't, go ahead, sir.
Absolutely agree with what you're saying, I spoke with Ms. Liebman about this, when the discussion of the Skidsteer came up, Ms. Liebman, politically correct, was pretty animated about, she has done all the grants she wants to do, and she didn't want to do it, and I said, well, that's not much of a volunteer, young lady, if you want to be a volunteer. She's very many, many, she said, I really don't want to, I said, well, you know, the county could do it for you, I said, but I think you're going to need to be involved, so my feeling would be, if we choose to ask Meredith to do this, I think we need to bring, ask Joni to be part of this, since her family would.
Just barely got that, sir.
This is her area, and I would like to put some of this, ask her to be part of the grant writing process, if we, if we're going to ask Meredith to do this, this is my comment.
When is the grant due? The, when is it due?
What is the grant due, buys a Skidsteer?
No, when is it due, when is it, when do we need it written?
Uh, it's supposed to be in, by my understanding, first of March.
Lucky.
We did this as fast as we could, we found out about it, we, as soon as we knew that it was going to happen, we, we started work, we started, you know, everything in the process.
So you're doing another grant now, right?
So then, that would be the airport one that I'm working on, which we need to, then, so then that.
You're working on it. I got a phone call from this.
Yeah, we got the, the dollar.
For Upper Arkansas Recycling.
Okay. So then, let me ask this, Meredith, not having seen this grant, whether it's three pages or 40 pages.
Right.
Which was my concern, would you be willing to consider authoring the grant?
I like Jay's idea of adding in.
Oh, I think it's her.
Yeah.
Joni and Steve both have indicated that they will assist.
Yeah.
She did not want to take it on herself.
If there's assistance, then.
So I would say that needs to be a caveat, don't you?
Yeah.
I'm talking, I, I didn't sense any resistance to me to one of those people helping, they just did not want to do it.
Well, she wrote right here, she says, if the county applies for this grant, you're bound, ask her, and she was more than willing to ask assistance, to help assist.
So, maybe one of these things in three weeks, we'll go, we knew we shouldn't have done it, but.
And we could always, we could always rescind our decision to do.
Could, yeah.
But this is not its stuff, very.
Yeah, and, and then also realizing what it's going to take, if it's a epically long grant application, or something that's going to go.
What agency is doing it?
CDPHE.
CDPHE.
On the other side, this is something we really need, I really liked Meredith's comment that, you know, if someone else needs it, we're going to drive it over, drill postholds, whatever else we needed for, I mean, it's a piece of county equipment we get for free.
Right.
I mean, this is what we do.
Certainly an asset does need.
Yeah, I'll all in on the whole process, I just think we need to be cautious about just saying, oh, yeah, Meredith can do that, but we get that enough as it is now, so, I'm certainly willing, Mr. Commissioner, to vote.
To the part about Meredith doing it is new to me, I was under the impression Steven was going to be doing it, and.
No, it's okay. No, and is Steven on the recycling?
Yeah, he's, progress was.
On the board?
Recycle, Upper Arkansas.
You're okay with at least looking at it?
Because they must have a template, because they've done this before.
Yeah, well, Joni, that's what she did for Olivia, from Copsdale, Colorado, so she has the inside on it.
Sound like Rusty said it's pretty.
Further discussion? Hearing them proceed, both, all in favor of authorizing the landfill to move forward with the CDPHE grant for a Skidsteer, and including Meredith to help write that, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay, motion carries, thank you, sir, appreciate it, yeah, I, everybody I've spoken to and looked at for this, I mean, I think it's, our chances are great to give that, so do you need this?
A job, seriously, do you need that back?
No, I don't need it back, those are yours for.
Forever and ever.
We're going to go with the Fort River one, but we had a second.
What's that?
Thank you, sir, glad you get that grant.
Mr. Chairman.
I know, I'm just.
Mr. Chairman, this is a point for you, so, I know I need to be here for this, this executive session.
Yes.
I have to leave at 11:15.
Okay.
It's in order to, to deal with some of this as well, that's why I've been watching my clock.
You need to leave at 11?
At 11:15, at the latest.
Chair would entertain a motion to move the executive session up the agenda.
I'm at, I'm moved, we move it up.
Okay, second, sir, the movement seconded to amend the agenda by moving the executive session up the agenda, immediately following the CDPHE landfill grant, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries, give us just a second, sir, we'll get organized here, obviously, we're about to move into an executive session, and.
You need us to.
Uh, I will in a minute, yes, Chair would entertain a motion to move into executive session.
I thought we did that.
Nope.
Well.
We moved.
I moved, move it up, now we need to move it into executive session, I'll move through that, too.
Okay, would you, did you get that email?
Yes.
Would you read that language, sir, we've been a little remiss on our executive session, that's why I sent that out.
It is moved to go into executive session for a conference with Custer County Attorney and, for the purpose receiving legal advice on specific legal questions under CRS Section 24-6-402, per, perens, four, perens, B.
Thank you, sir. I'll send the motion, the movement seconded to move into executive session under 24-6-402, sub, four, sub, B, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay, motion carries, we'll move into executive session, and we would ask for you folks in the audience, according, then Commissioner or Attorney Smith, any comments?
The executive session that was just concluded was to discuss a security matter, and for me to give you some legal information and legal advice, we stayed on topic, did not discuss anything that was not relevant to that issue, and I believe all the laws regarding executive session were properly followed.
Okay, thank you, all right, next agenda item.
Transfer of funds.
Guess that would be me.
Go ahead, Commissioner Cannon. Go ahead, Commissioner Canada. So, we have to transfer money from the general fund, uh...
Seventy-three thousand and one.
Capital improvement for seventy-three thousand and one dollars. Go ahead.
This is for the, the money that you received for the sale of the Great Creek property.
Right.
It went into the general fund, and so now we need to transfer it to capital improvement.
I move that we transfer seventy-three thousand and one dollars from the Custer, uh, excuse me, from the county general fund to capital improvement.
Second.
The move is seconded to transfer seventy-three thousand and one dollars from general fund to capital improvement fund. Discussion. Think it's housekeeping. We agreed that, and voted actually, to create a, well, not to create a line item, but to transfer this money into capital improvement. So, this is just paperwork and follow up for that. Further discussion? Hearing no proceed to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay. Motion carries. We will, uh, transfer this seventy-three thousand and one dollars. Ms. Kelly, you are the only signature on that, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right. Next item of business is the tourism board appointment.
Before you move on.
Yep.
You and I talked about why I'm the only...
Yes.
...person that signs that. If you read that statement at the bottom, I'm just stating that it's a true copy of what happened during the meeting that's in the minutes that you signed.
Okay.
So, that's what it is, is it's just a copy of what's in the minutes to go to Virginia.
It's truly copied from the records of the proceedings of the BOCC.
So, you do, in a way, you do sign it when you sign the minutes.
Correct. Okay. And then the tourism board appointment, um, I did not get that into my board packet, so I apologize. I got the email, but I did not get a copy of that into my board packet. I got the copy, but I did not get it to my board packet.
Maybe, maybe I'll put it in.
Yeah, because it was sent to us. I just need to pull it up out of my email.
Can I make a comment while you do that?
Certainly.
He's looking incredulous like.
I know, I sent it.
I know. I got it.
My comment for the record is that Maryland Hennessy is a private client of mine, and I would like to abstain from any action or discussion of this matter because of...
Yeah, I checked again. I just don't have it in my board packet. Typically, I roll those from my emails into the board packet.
So, it wasn't me?
Uh, not unless you sent it to us, but, yeah. Normally, I would take those items and put them onto my own board packet, and I just failed to do that.
So, there's two things going on, Bob Henson and Maryland Hennessy.
So, if you don't mind, let me pull that up. Yeah, the email from Debbie Adams obviously was to appoint Bob Swanson to be approved on the BOCC to serve as a voting member for three years, ending in January 2022. What's the group's pleasure?
And then, you want to do both things at one time? All right, I move, we accept Bob. Member of the tourism board for a three-year term, beginning, ending 2022.
To move and seconded to appoint Bob Swanson to the tourism board as a voting member, three-year term, ending 2022. Discussion.
I would just state that I got an email from Mr. Swanson this morning. I guess he assumed this was going to happen because he wants me to prepare some release forms for the use of videos that the tourism board will use.
Okay. Yep. Okay, um, further discussion? Hearing no proceed to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay. Carries. Then, was there a subsequent?
Maryland Hennessy to be ex officio member for one year.
Recommend the appointment of Maryland Hennessy as an effect's ex officio member with a one-year term. Group's pleasure?
I move, we accept. Hennessy is an ex officio member for a one-year term, ending 2022.
Okay. Sir, second. You can certainly second the motion, and you can debate, or you can abstain from that as well.
Thinking, "Was abstained?"
So, it's up to you. I checked the rules of parliamentary law. You certainly can do that.
I was unaware of that, and I will go ahead and second it, but I won't vote.
All right. It's been moved and seconded to appoint Maryland Hennessy for a one-year term as ex officio. Discussion. I can tell you, gentlemen, I will vote this down. I would like to see this tourism board have some represented, representation on it from the agricultural agritourism background. I just had mentioned that in passing to you, Mr. Prince. I know they have talked about agritourism. I don't believe anybody on this board is anywhere near competent to deal in the agritourism industry, and so, uh, I would like to, in my opinion, and that's all it is, would like to see this seat be held for someone else.
Comment?
Yes, sir. Absolutely. We're in debate.
Because I'm not going to vote. We did have this discussion. The point is, uh, is absolutely on point, and I, I believe that that is very valid.
Um, you know, I've got some other comments. I'm not going to share those because I don't think they're polite. They're my personal opinion, and I don't think they're necessary, but I believe that...
Keep it to yourself. Said it all.
I believe, uh...
You just said it all.
Hey, I, I'll pipe up. I agree that we need diversity on that board, that everybody seems to be of the same bent right now. And however, I do know that Maryland Hennessy graduated from the University of Arizona, Department of Banking. We're not going to hold that against them. I know. But, uh, I agree.
I think, too, not only from the agritourism thing, I think we've got, it would be nice to have somebody on that tourism board that's got some idea about outdoor recreation beyond hiking and camping, hunting, fishing. I just don't get the sense that the members, that's a big issue on their plate. I think it should be.
No.
To me, the reason we're voting on this is because it's a political appointment.
Okay, one other thing to consider, though, is she's ex officio with that...
Ex officio. Can't vote, but I just think we need the input.
They need hands, you know?
Yep.
She's pretty... I don't know her for a day, true. I just know that Joanna, she got talking, they did the same thing at the University of Arizona.
Yeah, I'd just like to see some, some agritourism representation on that board as well as some, uh, hunting and fishing expertise. I don't think there's any in there now. So, that's where I'm at. Further discussion?
I think, uh, Max Smith wants to volunteer for me. No, no, I thought I saw him nodding his head.
For the discussion, gentlemen, uh, madam, Secretary, would you call and roll, please, in any order you choose?
I vote no, so it doesn't matter.
Well, I don't know that, that's anything.
Uh, Commissioner Flower.
I know what you're going to vote. You told everybody.
I vote no.
Commissioner Canada. And you're abstaining? So, Commissioner Prince abstaining.
Abstaining, okay. All right, motion fails on, uh, your two vote.
So, who's going to tell Debbie?
I will tell her.
Discuss.
I will tell her.
Tell her why.
Yeah, you are the point of contact. I certainly, as chair...
And I would encourage her to volunteer and do things, you know? I sure would. That's right.
Okay, thank you. Next item of business, approval of letter of support for the judicial assistance grant. Under Sheriff Barr, been very involved in writing this grant. He asked if we could write a letter of support, and so, um, I have that. I penned one, and, uh, I can't remember if I sent that to you guys in advance. He sent that to me. I think I got that Friday afternoon, so I sit down and hammered out a letter and basically saying that we support the efforts to go after this grant. It is aimed at, uh, the radios, um, TDR or DTR radios, sorry, digital trunk radios.
I move that we approve a letter to support the JAB grant for radio. I'll second.
Okay. Been moved seconded to approve a letter of support to the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Grant Administrators on behalf of the county commissioners for this grant aimed at DTR radios. Further discussion? I do have one item of discussion, gentlemen. I wanted to ask you today, do... Should we all three sign this? That's my question. Right now, I've got, as the chairman, my signature line on there, but the more I thought about it, the more I thought, you know, maybe we ought to...
Yeah, I, I personally, I think it's fine for the chairman to sign it. I think it is a little stronger if the three of us sign it, because then whoever is reading it knows that it wasn't just the chairman who agreed.
Right.
All three of us did, so I, I have no issue doing it either way, but I think it's a little stronger if the three of us sign it.
Um, that being said, uh, would you gentlemen be able to swing by the office this afternoon and sign it if we retyped that letter?
I suspect that I could find it in my schedule.
Because I'm, I agree exactly.
Good thing.
I agree. The more I looked at it, and then, of course, I looked at it another night with all three of our signature lines on here, and I thought, yeah, you know what? I think it would be.
Of course, I'll come by a little later and sign it.
So, Commissioner Canada, you are...
Yeah, I'll sign it.
Okay. I'm going to let Jay look at it because he doesn't see it, but, um...
What's that?
Anyway, uh, I don't know if we want to, we did some comments on, on, in there if you want to talk.
Okay. And let me say this, too. I've also forwarded a copy of that to Chris Barr. He said, "Looks good," so...
He didn't have any to find since we're going to rewrite. Do you want to find some?
On the letter.
On the board of county commissioners.
Let me pull that up. All right. So, your corrections, and I'll make them right here, sir. So, on behalf of the, or as members of the board of county commissioners?
Board of county commissioners.
Okay, gotcha.
And I would call Mr. Barr, I can call it under sheriff.
Okay, the Custer County Board of County Commissioners, uh...
I don't know that...
Support.
Yeah, support strongly support.
Let's change the word live to our opinion.
Right.
To be commended to their ability.
I don't think you need to say that they spent quarter of a million bucks already.
Well, that was by Mr. Barr's input.
I don't have a mission. I don't even have to say it.
He actually, uh...
Support this.
Sent kind of form letter, follow, get the wording right, but...
So, you want to change it to we are, I mean, I don't know, just say the, the, uh, recent purchases of whatever it is, you know?
That be set aboard.
The board is to be Meredith, so your, your mom is coming to work.
Yeah, I would just X that out, say recent purchase of...
Yeah, we need to go with the whole family.
Yeah, I'm excited about it.
We went in first. Very cool. I think still April 1st is our...
You guys really like watching sausage beat.
I know.
That's so cool.
Stoked.
And that's the E911 board, right?
Yes.
Yeah. Sorry, it took me a second to say.
That's okay.
Circle there.
I went off topic.
Jay distracted me.
Meredith's mother is coming to work.
Yeah. April 1st.
Yeah, what's she going to do, right? What's she do?
Uh, she's going to be a caseworker for human services.
Okay, I'm going to resend this to your desk.
Okay. And I'll add the three signatures and put it on that.
All right. All right. All right. All right. Okay. Okay, uh, thank you. Did we vote on that yet? No, we were still in debate. Any further discussion? Hearing no proceed to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay.
As corrected.
As corrected. And, uh, you guys will swing by. We will swing by there this afternoon and give, uh, Meredith a chance to read. It doesn't matter how they've been raised.
No.
Uh, next item of business is consideration of a letter to the Upper Arkansas Water Conservancy District or withdraw, uh, Custer County from their augmentation plan. Yes, sir, go ahead.
Um, just so there's never a question as to what, if this is approved, even before it's approved, I think having a letter ought to be read into the record so that no one could later say that the letter that was sent, if one is sent, is different from the one that we go.
Correct.
So, I think it ought to be read into the record.
Good point. Um, I would move that the county commissioners submit a letter to the Upper Arkansas Water Conservancy District requesting to be withdrawn from the proposed water augmentation plan, file number 2108CW3076.
I'll second the motion.
We're moved and seconded to submit a letter to the Upper Arkansas Water Conservancy District requesting to withdraw Custer County from the proposed aug plan.
Further discussion, read it.
Uh, when the motion, when we deal with the motion, I'll read it then. Further discussion? Anything, Kate?
Just listening so far.
All right. Um, yeah, I, after some discussion, um, we have included their attorney, the letter is written to the chairman of the board, and then we are also carbon copying all of the board members. So, they will, everyone will get a copy of that letter. And I see Mr. Sinderhoff's names here as the addressee, and then his name's also on here, so we're just sending one. We don't have to cross it all, but, well, yeah, we probably should take that off to be technically correct, so I will...
What's line two things when we come by?
I will draw a line through that name. We can just delete that. We actually...
Did you, uh...
We actually don't have to redo this one because the signature page is different.
I personally don't feel it's necessary to send to their attorney because we sent an official, um, opposition to them, and they would get a copy of that. That's your choice.
I also wondered if we should send this to the Division General.
It's certainly not heard, but unlikely the judge would have a secret.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Could you explain, explain the letter, what you're requesting with this letter?
Yes, I'll read it. I'll read it, yeah.
I asked you to do that.
So, and actually, I probably jumped the gun on you, sir. I probably should have read this letter after the motion was made, so I would...
Start to discuss it with them.
Yeah, I will do that now. Mr. Robert M. Cinderhoff, Chairman, Upper Arkansas Water Conservancy District, P.O. Box 1090, 339 East Highway 50, Salida, Colorado 81201. Via certified mail, return receipt regarding Colorado Division 2 Water Court filing 2018CW3076. Dear Mr. Cinderhoff, on February 11th, 2019, the Custer County Board of County Commissioners held a public workshop to educate and discuss with the residents of the county, the Upper Arkansas Conservancy Districts, a recent filing with the Division 2 Arkansas River Basin Water Court filing number 2018CW3076. This filing was submitted to the Water Court in December 2018. During a public meeting on February 6th, 2019, the spokesman for the Upper Arkansas Water Conservancy District, Tim Canterbury, stated that if the residents of Custer County opposed to the submitted water augmentation plan, which affects Custer County, the UAWCD would withdraw it from the Division 2 Water Court filing. With an apparently unanimous vote of the Custer County water rights holders present and the vast majority of the other participants in the February 11th, 2019, public meeting, the residents voted to reject the UAWCD's filed augmentation plan as it pertains to Custer County. Therefore, the Custer County Board of County Commissioners, at the direction of its constituency, respectfully request that the Upper Arkansas Water Conservancy District, at its next scheduled Board of Directors meeting, if not sooner, formally resend its proposed water augmentation plan as it pertains to Custer County. Signatories of three commissioners, and then...
Read the letter.
Carbon copy of all the Board of Directors.
Now, when you're talking about Mr. Tim Canterbury, does that say that he made that statement at the meeting on the 11th?
Uh, no, during a public meeting on February 6th.
Okay. Because I wasn't able to attend that one, and why do you know he did that?
Yeah. And then I wonder if we should put the spokesman and board member for the UAWCD.
No, if...
Although, obviously, they know he's a board member, because his name's on it.
I don't think I'll pass that under court. We're writing it to them, we're not writing it to somebody else, yeah.
Okay. Further discussion? Thank you for that. Commissioner Candy, you're right, should have been read, ready before we got any big discussion, so we know what we were discussing. Any other comments or discussion, public comment?
So, we have a objection. We've already filed a...
Statement of opposition.
Statement of opposition. And then, so if we send this to them, do they have the option of not taking this off or not?
Correct.
Correct. They can ignore it.
Whatever they want.
And from what I understand, too, they can always modify the filing, right?
They can amend it.
They can amend it as they resolve issues. Right, for the next two years or whatever it takes. So, this just puts us on record that said, as you know, you blindsided us, and heaven convinced us it doesn't do anything.
They told us that if we asked to be removed, they would remove us. I specifically asked Mr. Cinderhoff at the meeting on the 11th if he would stand by that, and he appropriately said, "I'll bring it to the board," but that comment was said. Yeah, I think that was inappropriate, I would answer that.
But he also added to that, "Why would I continue to beat my head against the wall? If it's not what you want, how can I continue to force this issue?"
Right, so he did say that. Right, so indicating to us, to me, that he would comply with this letter based on what Mr. Canterbury said and his comments at the subsequent meeting. So, I feel that it's likely they will, but they are not, they are under zero obligation to do that.
Right. And just in the sidebar, I got an email from their secretary, Upper Arkansas Secretary. Let me read that to you real quick, because there, I've already had two emails today during this meeting about this. Oops, sorry. Kimberly Kirsty. Thank you, gentlemen. I don't know if she's got about 40 people she sent this to. "Good afternoon. Notice is hereby given that a meeting of the Upper Arkansas Water Conservancy District will be held Monday, February 25th, at the district office commencing at 2:00 P.M. Please see the attached notice and agenda." And so, the attached agenda is, um, at 2:00 P.M., the legal report...
February 25th?
Yes. Law of the Rockies, Kendall Burgermeister, North Fort Reservoir diligence filing. That is the only thing on their agenda.
Then we need to get our letter to them before they hear.
Okay. Uh, because it could give them an opportunity to take action on it.
Correct.
I'm assuming this would probably go in the mail tomorrow, or today. I could take it to the board. Yeah, probably.
I mean, I could do it for lunch, you know? I could do it for lunch, you know? It just depends when you ask.
Uh, 2:00 P.M. on February 25th. Now, according, and I haven't responded to this yet, I will, and say if there's any other items of business to be considered, if you know that ahead of time, you know, would like to be aware of that. Doesn't mean they can't add something to their agenda, but this was kind of a surprise that this came up, especially since they canceled their last board meeting, and they said they didn't have anything to deal with. So, your point's well taken, sir. We will make sure that goes in the mail today or tomorrow.
Can I make a comment?
Go ahead.
Not to badmouth the mail, but I've had a lot of experience with the mail, and they may not get it by Monday.
We have a new postmaster, and I've heard multiple, multiple complaints. Not the time or place to really discuss that, except for, you know, maybe, maybe...
You scan it in then? Can you just email it back?
Email it, you could hand deliver it to behind.
We can hand deliver it. I'll take a ride to Salida.
I don't mind hand delivering it to their offices either.
But, I mean, if, if it can be scanned in, can that be fine?
She probably scanned it in and sent it to me.
If it can be scanned in...
I think we need to be a little more formal than that.
Well, we could always do that.
You do both.
Call it to scan it, send it with a hard copy to follow in the U.S. mail.
Yeah.
But, you know, anybody could say, "Oh, I didn't look at my email, I didn't open it, my computer's broken," and there's just a million things that, if someone wanted to find it, they could find ways to do it. Fortunately, and counsel help me if you don't agree, but most legal railings say that if you put what you posted in the U.S. mail, directly address it, put the proper postage on it, it is deemed that they will have received it subsequently. Catch it.
I would turn a volunteer to hand deliver it.
If that's the case.
Well, although, I'm sorry. That being said, if we hand deliver it to Mr. Cinderhoff at his office in Salida, he will get it until Monday anyway. He doesn't go up there every day, and we're addressing it to the district's office.
All right, I mean, you could just bring the package of it, hold it, hand it to the secretary, and that's notice to them. Someone will open it, hold it, while we got the problem. Or, if you see the letter, we expect whatever is feeling us or they can't speak for him, if we do that, we ought to take off the registered mail of our hand delivered.
Um, well, let me ask you this. Given that they can change and modify the filing anytime, does it really matter? We want to get it to them as fast as we can. If it gets there, it gets there. What would they do different?
Really well taken. There is no, there's no urgency here. They have talked to do the filing, except they're having a meeting to discuss this.
If they're having a meeting now, it's good, they can, we can, it's just courtesy, isn't it?
And according, according to their notice, they're not having a meeting to discuss this. I'm gonna, no, this is just North Fort Reservoir diligence filing.
Then I would say, "It's just railroad." They couldn't bring it up anyway.
Yeah, probably, well, 24-hour notice.
Yeah, so I doubt they're gonna do that, so I would say, "Listen, listen."
That's why I didn't panic when I first got this. I thought, "Well, it's only for their North Fort Reservoir project."
My mistake, I thought, I thought we should discuss our...
Not according to this.
Okay.
Not according to their... Just go ahead and mail them like we talked about. And that being said, then as well, I wanted to bring up one more thing during the discussion of this, because I think it's pertinent. The second Thursday of March, March 14th, is their regularly scheduled board meeting. I'm going to ask as an ex-official member to be put on the agenda to discuss this letter. I would recommend all three of us and anyone else, if we attend that meeting, I would like to... I would like to be there and watch whether or not they take action on this and what their reasons would be.
Don, don't.
Okay, so 14th, 1 o'clock, March 14th. I'll send out another email about that as well, but I think it's in our best interest to be there.
What I would do on this, we probably ought to include language that says, you know, we look, we need to work with that board. They're not gonna go away, right? I mean, it's, withdraw from the membership completely. So, they're gonna be mod, they're gonna consider, what are they gonna do with this? And if they're gonna keep it in there, it's not any good the way it is. If we, if they're gonna work over the next two years and modify it, I think they probably will. They gotta answer all the protests to be in, in order to get them cleared. They gotta clear it, and that means they change their, their, some engineering, or they go and prove to somebody that it isn't gonna be injurious or whatever. They will modify their filing. I think it's a crappy plan. I mean, everybody does. If they're gonna do it, do it right. I've had a lot of contact since those meetings with ranchers in the valley, and Randy Rusk included, and they all said, "Well, they look forward to a real augmentation plan, whatever that is, that is beneficial and not injurious, and would include the whole valley," which they had filed on one other time before, which I think is one of the reasons they blasted this through, because it got turned down eight years ago, or whenever they tried it before. So, we can't hide our heads. We gotta act, work with them, and I would put in there, "We look forward to working
Respectfully."
Later, I don't know.
I would, I would agree. Shove this down our throat.
Yeah.
They didn't ask us to be involved. They didn't ask for any input. They didn't ask Mr. Rusk or any other rancher what they felt. They just shoved it at us, and I feel we have every right to say to them...
Well, I think we do. I'm not denying.
I think we have every single right to say to them, "We want out of this plan." Now, bring us another plan in the future? Let's sit down and do this properly.
Yeah, that's all I'm saying.
Let our water users to sit down with them and let the water users say, "I agree with that, I disagree with it, this plan stinks the way it was presented, it's wrong, and I'm absolutely opposed to it."
Yeah, I just, I think...
I am, but where I was headed with that is, they, two things happened, a lot of things happened. They've been working it for how many years? And we've had members, I think Donley led us there, to tell the truth. I think Bob led us there. I think we need to do business in the future differently with them, and I think that we're good, we're gonna do that, not part of this plan.
We don't do business. That's their business.
I know, that's what I mean.
We're the customer.
Right, that's what I mean. They did it, that's my point. But they owe us that insight into what they're doing, and somehow, we've gotta get an interface. And we can talk about that here later, I do, with some other thoughts, but if, you know, I don't have a bit of objection to asking them to pull us out of that filing, because it isn't a good plan, period.
If your comment is that we should work together in the future, I 100% agree with that. But it's not one of us going and the other one going, "We're not, we gotta work together."
Right.
And if they're not willing to do that, and they proved, at least in this particular case, that they're not willing to, we need to have our guard up. And I'm not gonna count out to them, I'm not gonna...
No, no, I'm not suggesting that.
Either we're gonna work together with them, or we're not gonna work with them at all.
Let's close this out. I agree, we need to, we need to vote and send the letter. I just wanted to make sure that they're not looking at this as, "All right, we're done dealing." We're not, we have to.
No, that is never the case.
And I believe they know that, because we've said that in those two meetings, both up at Upper Ark and down here at Ranchers Roost, that we are only requesting to be taken out of this aug plan.
This plan in county.
We said, "We will continue to work and whatever," but to me, this is...
It did not have enough...
The point of this letter was to request to get, to have them take Custer County out of it.
Yeah, we didn't have enough insight. We had no, no ability to review it. The guys didn't know whether it injured anybody, and blah, blah, blah. All right.
Further discussion?
If I was a rancher, I'd be horrified. That's what they are. But, okay.
Got a rancher out. You have your comments, guys.
It's just the ranchers. You comment if you like, I'm certainly not gonna put you on the spot.
I do have two comments, so, one, I don't like it. You guys already know that. Secondly, I don't like the way it was presented, and, but you mentioned Randy Rusk, and this is kind of off the record, because I don't know this for a fact, but when you mentioned Randy, my first thought is, and like I say, I don't, I don't know this as, as fact, but if I'm not mistaken, Randy has a conservation easement on his property, on his ranch, and depending on how that was written...
Sure.
He has nothing to worry about in regard to his water, because his water will stay with that ranch for...
Sure.
Purpos...
No, I wasn't...
That is my understanding, so...
Yeah, if that's how it's written.
If that's how it's written, yes.
Certainly, I do know a ranch that is right on the edge of this blue land. They have a conservation easement, and the water is tied to that land. I know that for a fact. I don't, I can't speak about Randy's.
But Max, I only mention him because there are many, I've talked to many people about it, and Randy has a history of caring what is in Custer County, so it's not...
Basically, been here his whole life.
Right, and so, it's, it's not that. My point is, from his point of view, it's no good either, and if we're gonna do a plan, do a good one, you know, it had nothing to do with where he was gonna benefit one way or the other from it. So, we can talk about how to do that later, because we've got, we gotta do better at understanding what's in the future with those guys, because they're, they exist.
They have to do better.
Right.
They have to do better.
They have to do better.
Exactly right.
But we have people on that board, we are a part of that as well, and so, how can we do that? We can put more members in there, we can get maybe a commission of our own that has the interest of the county at heart, that interfaces them full-time, because obviously, Tom, you're busy, you're doing a lot of other things. I don't know what Mr. Donley's been doing, but bottom line is, we may need some help.
It's my understanding, he wasn't even at the meeting, was he? But it to, to do the filing.
No, but why wasn't the county informed more about that process? That line just didn't, wasn't invented.
Oh, it was invented, they circumvented it.
Not that day. My point is, is that we should have been aware of what was being considered and had more public meetings early. I don't, that's their problem. They didn't do it, and bring us in.
Well, wasn't the statement made by the manager of Upper Ark that we tried it the other way the first time?
Didn't work, so we're just gonna ignore it.
We're just gonna shove it down your throat?
Right. But then, then that is, then it's incumbent to me upon the actual voting members that represent Custer County's interests to bring it up to us. They didn't, because they were hiding it from them? I don't know. If that's the case, that's a dysfunctional board.
Well, they clearly were hiding it from us. I said in 11 out of the 15 meetings, it was never mentioned. You can go back and check the minutes. I've looked. I cannot find any wording about that. This is not on Custer County. We have representation there.
Repeat.
So, I just am not gonna buy that we need to work with them. It's their job.
Saying they need to work with us, you're misunderstanding what I'm saying.
Okay, well, I thought you said we need to work...
I'm upset, I am really upset they blindside us, period. And to me, though, I gotta look beyond that. What do we do in the future to make sure they don't blindside us again? Because they're not done.
That is a terrifically valid statement.
And that's my whole point. So, filing this is not gonna do that. It's just gonna, you know, put them on notice, and then they're gonna either take it, their board's gonna have to vote.
To their work.
Yeah, they're, they're gonna put it to their board. See, now, Canterbury was speaking for, sound like himself, but other guys have their...
He was the spokesman for that group.
I know.
He was put up there, he was the good old boy, trust me, I'm a farmer, too, and that kind of a...
But they still gotta vote.
I know what he was doing, and that...
And I'm leery.
He was put up as their spokesman.
I know, and I'm leery of that, because they're gonna vote on it.
Well, that's why I think we need to be in that audience of that meetings, and we'll see how they vote.
That's, we've gotta, we've gotta take care of the county.
You know, there are, it's a process, and the process is, they have two voting members and one ex-official member. and one ex-official member. Now, had we not been going to these meetings, then I'd, I'd be coming from a different direction, I'd say that it is on us, that we weren't sending our rep to that meeting, the rep wasn't coming back and reporting to you. That's fine, but that is not the case, so, um.
We need to split it to them in that meeting, tell them where was.
Call the questions.
Further, further debate, public comment, hearing none, proceed to vote, all in favor of submitting the letter, uh, as amended to Upper Ark. Say aye?
Aye.
Aye, pose nay? Motion carries, Ms. Meredith. I think the only thing we need to do is strike, uh, Bob Sinderhoff's name on that page, I take the other page down.
Okay, so actually, well, at some point, my, this discussion we just had, we're gonna have to come and, and discuss, and maybe it's after that meeting, see what they do, where we can be, but we're gonna have to figure out what Custer County.
Let's see how they respond. But I agree with you, either we can have a relationship with them, or we're gonna have to make some very difficult decisions.
Okay, next item on the agenda is public comment. Yes, go ahead, sir.
What was the date and time of that meeting?
February the 14th. Uh, 14th, and.
The one coming up?
March.
March.
Yeah, March 14th, I'm sorry.
This, this, the special meeting they're calling was February 14th.
February 25th.
But the regular board meeting.
It was February 25th.
I'm sorry, February 25th. March 14th is their regular scheduled board meeting at 1:00.
And what time is the special meeting?
The special meeting is at 2:00. No, it's at 2:00.
That's good to know.
Which I thought was interesting that they changed the time on that as well, so, um.
Do we need to attend the special meeting?
I, I don't think so, I mean, as the ex-official, I may go, I would take directions from.
If we find that they posted 24 hours in advance, please, I'm gonna change that.